We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, please rise. Pastor John Mclemore with Belmont Baptist Church will lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Father God, we come tonight seeking your wisdom and direction, asking, Father, that you would be with these people that are here together about the business of this city, that, Father, you'd give them guidance, direction, revelation, that, Father, what we do, what happens, what becomes of the decisions that are made here, we bring honor and glory to you and your son, Jesus Christ. Father, these things we pray in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now, we have a troop, 1908 is going to present the colors.
Scouts salute. Prepare to post the colors. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Color guard, post the colors. Color guard reform. Color guard return to folks.
Before you go all the way back there, I just want to go through everybody's names. If you would, raise your hand. Andrew Hughes. Gunnar Broden. Jordan Falk. Isaac Creto. Trevor Fikes. And Braden Burns. Thank y'all very much. Okay, we have no proclamations, awards, presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Real Property Resources. Mr. Brenly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This first request was approved on the first reading by the council back on January the 10th of this year. The property involved in the request is located northwest of intersection of East 91st Street and Bevorm Avenue. This site is currently designated future development. It is vacant, and land use in this area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant and the property owner is Real Property Resources, and the purpose of this request would create 56 single-family residential lots. These lots range in size from 5,303 square feet up to 13,072 square feet. There's also 10 zero lot line, single-family garden home lots. These range in size from a little over 4,200 square feet up to 6,692 square feet. This request will also create two drill reservations and a drainage channel. This area is located in the northern area of the city of Odessa's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the primaries for new residential growth in Odessa, and it calls for residential development and related uses. The zoning requested for this site and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways, and also a diverse range of housing, and this is indicated by the combination of the traditional single-family detached residential development and garden homes. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request with the following conditions: And related to the garden home development, the minimum lot area would be 4,200 square feet. Front yard building setback would be 20 feet. If a lot happened to be in a cul-de-sac, the front yard setback would be 15 feet. Side yard building setback would be zero on one consistent side of the lot and 10 feet on the opposite side of the lot. If the side yard happened to be adjacent to a side street, there would be a 10-foot building setback. Rear yard building setback would be five feet required on a property without an adjacent alley. And the maximum lot coverage would not exceed 60%. And development standards related to a traditional single-family residential lot would have a minimum lot area of 5,300 square feet, 20-foot front yard setback, and the same 15-foot front yard setback in a cul-de-sac, 5-foot side yard setback, and a 5-foot rear yard setback on a property with no alley. Maximum lot coverage of 60%. Maximum building height not to exceed two stories. No driveway would be allowed on major thoroughfare. In this instance, it would be East 91st Street. And any significant change from the approved site plan would require a site plan amendment that comes back before this council for approval, and also adoption of this site plan. And the planning staff does concur with the commission's recommendation for approval. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Brenly?
Yeah, there are a lot of, a lot of protests in here. Have you talked to these people? Have they had a chance to come up?
Yes, ma'am. I have talked with them, and the staff has. Most of it was related to...
The drill site?
Well, not, no, ma'am, not even the drill sites. It was related to some false information that got out that somehow this was going to be low-income assisted living housing. And that not being the case, the, you know, the protests were not...
So, are they all, all of these that turned in a protest, are they all on board now? Or...
Not necessarily on board, but, you know, they said it was, it lessened their concerns with the development. But we had numerous phone calls. Once they were explained what the situation was, they agreed the same type of development, where they're living, it lessened any concerns that the property owners in the area had.
Are any of those people here tonight?
Oh, we've been ready to open it up.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Brenly before I open up the floor?
This is a second. Second, yes, sir. So, we had more than one time for those in May have checked to have the opportunity to come in and speak.
Yes, sir.
I've spoke to, I've had a few phone calls on it also, and it was a picture of the drill site, which I explained to them, the drill site's always been in there.
Yes, sir.
Drill site's always been in there.
Yes, sir.
Never could have had a house built on it, and it was, yeah, like a lot.
Right. Yes, sir.
They are, a lot of, well, two of them that I spoke to, they didn't realize, you know, I was telling them about the property, you know, I've got a drill site on the north side of me, I've got one on the south side of me, and they didn't realize they were in the drill site. Well, they drill well, they're, yeah.
Yes.
But they never had.
Right.
And that's right.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Brenly? Well, this is a public hearing, so this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this publicly. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Come on, please. If you would just give us your name and your address.
I'm Dustin Rose. My address is 94, 9234 Caprito Drive. And it's, my question is about the garden homes. You know, I bought that house in 2008. That was the first street they did back when they started developing this area. I know we had a lot of restrictions. I think it was 1750 square feet, minimum build, on these sites. And looking at the lot sizes, the proposed lot sizes, for example, looking at the pitcher, you know, and I have kind of a weird lot. Mine's, I'll have three houses behind me. But just looking at the size, I'm not sure how big of a house you'd actually fit on that thing. I'm worried about my, my value of my property having substantially smaller homes built behind me, so.
Actually, the garden home is designed to be on a smaller lot. It'll be, maximum lot coverage will be 60%. So, if you're looking at a minimum of 4,000 square feet, it could go up to about a 2,200, 2,300 square foot house on this property. Kelly, what's, are you looking at a size of something like that?
1,500 and 2,000 are the two sizes we have for the garden homes, and the rest of the homes that are in the entire neighborhood are anywhere from 1,300 to 2,500 square.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was in there somewhere.
Is there, you have any other question, or?
That's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? Okay, this time, go ahead.
I have a comment. And you may have said this, and I missed it. There are no alleys, right?
Actually, there are some alleys involved.
There are alleys on this one.
On both of these requests, there are alleys involved. It's not all of the lots, but there are alleys involved. The garden homes back up to a drill site will not have garden homes, but the traditional single-family will have alleys. So, it's a combination of both.
So, how are you going to handle the pickup of our garbage?
The pickup and the alleys will be through the traditional dumpster, and the ones without alleys will have the rollout containers.
Any more questions?
And so, all their utilities will be in the front?
Yes, ma'am, like what they've done in the past.
On the trash pickup, oh, I'm sorry. On the trash pickup, almost all new residential now is on the rollout cars.
There won't be any dumpsters, but?
No, there won't be any dumpsters.
Okay.
Okay. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by Real Properties Inc. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. This request also was approved on first reading by the council back on January the 10th of this year. The property involved in this request is located west of the intersection of North Evans Boulevard and East 100th Street. Site is currently designated future development and vacant. Land use in the area does consist of a single-family residential development, vacant land. The applicant and property owner is Real Property Resources, and the purpose of this request would create 30 single-family residential lots, ranging in size from 5,600 up to 13,265 square feet. There are 13 zero lot line, single-family garden home lots, and there's also drill sites that would have surface drainage. This area is also located in the northern area of the city's future land use map, and it is considered one of the primaries for residential growth. The zoning request for this site also is, and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways, and also provide a diverse range of housing, and this is indicated by the combination of the traditional single-family lots and the garden home lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission also approved this request with the following conditions, and the conditions are basically the same as the other related setbacks. The main change will be the minimum lot size in the single-family is 5,600 square feet, lot area minimum. And then you have a 20-foot front yard setback, five feet on the side, five feet on the rear if there's not an alley. Maximum lot coverage for all buildings would not exceed 60%, and maximum building height would be two stories. And for the garden home lots, the minimum lot size would be 4,060 square feet with a building setback in the front of 20, zero on one consistent side of the lot and 10 feet on the opposite side, which does provide a 10-foot separation for all buildings out there. And maximum lot coverage for all buildings would not exceed 60%. There would be no driveways allowed on thoroughfare streets, and in this case, it would be East 100th. And the same condition of any amendments or significant amendment would require the council's approval and adoption of this site.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Brenly? Okay. This time, we will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this publicly. Is there anyone who would like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three, open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request by Odessa Housing Finance Corp. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city now has four notices related to this case. We have no notices returned, no written protests, and one written approval. The property involved in this request is located southeast of the corner of the intersection of East 87th Street and proposed Hunter Miller Way. This property is currently zoned multifamily one. It is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of vacant land and retail development to the west. And this is a portion of a larger piece of property that is owned by Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, and the purpose of the rezoning request would facilitate retail development on this site, and this would serve as a support-type development to the various types of residential development that's proposed in the future in this area. This area is located in the northeast of the city's future land use map. The area is considered one of the primaries for retail and commercial development, and as stated, it would serve as a support for medium-density residential growth in this part of Odessa. And the zoning requested for the site is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and context-sensitive roadways. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Tell me where this is, is this part of the area that's fenced off right now that's being worked on, or is it on further to the east of that?
It's just a little bit further to the east, I believe, ma'am. And it's right adjacent to 87th, just north before those apartments are going to be, just north of there.
So, what's going to be between the apartments and, well, I've seen it on here, but it didn't really, how far is it from the church that's, that's there? You've got a church up over here.
Oh, the church right there adjacent to Don.
Right.
Yeah, it's a pretty significant ways from the church. It's just, like I say, just north before the apartments are going to be built.
Okay, so this is going to be, this is going to be where we could put a business or something in there?
Yes, sir. It's to act as a support for the Odessa Housing Finance Development. It's to the south. It'll be uses like, hopefully, a pharmacy, things of this nature, maybe a smaller grocery store, things like that, to support the residential development in that area.
Odessa Housing Finance will find a buyer for that, select a neighborhood, put some type of business into that.
Yes, sir. That's, that's their intent.
What about the land just to the left of it?
Well, this is where the apartment...
Isn't that whole thing, John, you may know more than I do, isn't that where we were parking at the other day? Isn't that pretty close to where we were all parking?
That's literally where everybody was parking. The ground I think trailer was. John Langraft, 521 North, Texas. This piece was actually part of the apartment site, and when they scaled the apartment site down to the 181 units...
So, what's that sign of fence? It's a lot of fence.
Yes. And it is just, it was zoned multifamily when we had it as part of the apartment.
Right next to the lease road?
Yes, right next to the lease road.
That's correct. Lease road zone is, is the right-hand side of this.
That trailer was? Did we all park that?
Yes.
So, so let me ask you this. Does Odessa Housing Development today own any more land to the east?
No. Their property line, looking at...
Come back down, John.
Yeah, okay.
Their property line?
Their property line is, yeah.
Right here, on that lease road.
That lease road is their property line. The fence line on the lease road is their property line, and it goes back to the piece that's cut out. They own the whole 46 acres.
There's always been a retail mention of this development. However, when they did scale down, that's the reason for putting it there.
That's, all we're doing is just, so now we have retail across the entire frontage when we scaled the apartment project down.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's just getting it ready for something once the multifamily gets built and they, and they start building over houses back there, you know, the second, third...
The whole front of it will be, the whole front of that fenced-off area will be what we're talking about right here.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just making it consistent all across the front.
All right. Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
This isn't a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for any comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir.
Next, under ordinance is, consider authorizing the abandonment of a portion of North Jackson. Ervone. You look like Ervone.
Ervone is here tonight, but I'm going to be his voice. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This first item is dealing with Jackson between 5th and 6th Streets. The item is to propose and abandon the, this section. It's for the development of the Conference Center Hotel and Parking Garage. In this section of Jackson, the city will not retain a general utility easement, access, or drainage easement on this portion of the roadway. And if you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer them.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Speaking of Convention Center, we do have our Citizen of the Year sitting in the audience. Sandra Ove. Randy was blocking you for a minute, but then he parted, so. Next, we move to resolutions. Consider authorizing the abandonment of an alley right-of-way located in Block 42.
This is the alley west of Jackson between 5th and 6th, right behind the Actors Theater. This is also for the development of the Conference Hotel and Parking Garage. Existing city utilities in this alley will be abandoned, as well as the franchise utilities will be relocated. And I can answer any questions if you have on this one.
Any questions? Now, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider authorizing the abandonment of a portion of an alley located in Block 47. Mr. Ervone.
This is the alley east of Jackson between 5th and 6th. For the same purpose, although in this alley, the city will, will retain a general utility and access easement in this, in this section of alley.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we consider authorizing the abandonment of a portion of an alley.
This is a different area. The Sherwood Church of Christ has requested that the city abandon a portion of right-of-way east of Dixie, south of 51st Street. The city utilities will be abandoned, and no general utility easements will be retained. And as part of this, the Sherwood Church of Christ has agreed to compensate the city the amount of $15,932.
Which is the cost for that section of alley.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, consider use of prior unexpended promotional revenue for satisfaction of the 10% cap on promotional expenses for ODC. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, there is currently a 10% cap on the expenditure of promotional expenses from the ODC revenue that's brought in in any given year. However, the Attorney General has ruled that if the ODC and council finds that prior unexpended promotional funds are validated as such by the council, that they can be used for these promotional expenses. This would allow us to go back to 1998 when we started and to accumulate all of the, of the money that was set up for promotional purposes. We have done that, and we listed it by year, and it turns out to be a total of $541,482.38, to be exact. And we would recommend that the council adopt the validation of that money as being there for promotional purposes. That would allow us to use it for any promotional purpose that the council subsequently wishes to use it for. Otherwise, we will not be able to use it.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Long? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider authorizing the acceptance of a donation of the Cloth World sign. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you use the same scintillating explanation that I had for the last article. This is, Mr. Utzinger, who currently owns the Cloth World sign, as it's known, has agreed to donate it to the city of Odessa. This would simply allow the city to accept the donation.
Okay, there are any questions, Mr. Long? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Austin Key, thank you for all your hard work on this. Randy, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Appreciate it.
Number 10, consider a lease agreement, approximately 1,068 square foot. Mr. Long.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually the property that the Cloth World sign is located on, and some property to the side that will allow for utilities to be extended to it and for access to it to do maintenance and repair, from Mr. Utzinger. And I will also note that Austin was fundamental in really the entire aspect of this.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Long? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number 11, consider a resolution supporting the study of the extension of I-27 to I-20. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Last year, Tech Dot held a number of public hearings on the possible extension of I-27 south of Lubbock, commonly known as Ports to Plains. What we're asking you to do with this resolution is to encourage Tech Dot to do a study that would look at all available routes south of Lubbock. A route through Odessa, a route through Midland, a route through Big Springs and Angelo, and give it a good look and make sure they're considering all the factors.
You know, I think we have a very unique opportunity here. I would like to see us invite our Judge Trippleus, who's the commissioner of Tech Dot now, to come and talk to us about that. I, I would like to know more about it. This goes back to, what, '95 or '97? Was that when this started? And I don't think it's exactly following what we talked about back then, so I would like to invite him to come and talk to us and kind of educate us a little bit about this.
It's going to be hard, because I know he travels on Tuesdays.
I think...
Is this...
Well, I don't think, not, well, I think not taking action on the item itself, I think that could, it could hurt. I would encourage you to go and take action... I, I would encourage you to go and take action to encourage TechStop to do the study. And we could certainly get Tryon, Mr. Lewis here, in the future. We could invite him and see if he would come speak to us. But I think your action to encourage the study would help provide him with, with additional information to help the area as well.
I think he might have the right information that...
Well, one of the, one of the concerns that I know I've heard, he has Ports de Plains with going to Big Springs and going down to San Angelo. The traffic doesn't dictate going that way. The traffic is in the Permian Basin, and I talked to Mayor Pope from Lovick. He gave me his preferences, which were very positive for us, I'll just say that. But TechStop needs to look at the numbers to see where this needs to go.
Which this resolution would...
Which support just doing this. TechStop's gonna pay for it. You know, it's kind of a, sitting on the motorboard. This is something I think we need to move forward with, and I think Tryon does, would be good to have Tryon here. Just with his schedule, I think it may have to be on a Monday, because usually...
That's fine. We got a special... And Barbara, you're right. This does date back to the nineties. And back then, I believe a parent study was done that showed the route through the Odessa Midland area financially and economically speaking was, was the preferred route. So you're right, it does date back that far.
Okay.
Well, I, and if, I'm not, I'm not for talking, because before, when we start looking at this number twelve, and if we accept one, then we're kinda forced into accepting the other one. And that one I have a lot more questions about, because if I remember correctly, this I-14 was a fort-to-fort, and now it looks to me like that's going to be changed.
Well, we can only just talk about one at a time, so we would have two.
I know, but that, I'm just saying this before we...
Yeah, I don't know that one locks you into the other, if that's what your concern is. There, there are separate items, and you can certainly vote any way you want on each item.
Okay.
Make a motion. We support a resolution for the study of extension of I-27 to I-20.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain from that.
Okay. It's three.
A little premature.
And one extension. Next, consider resolution supporting redesignation of the western leg of I-14. Mr. Long.
Basically, guys, this is, I believe, something that TechStop is going to do. They're going to designate a portion of, create an I-14 to the west. And so what this resolution does is to encourage them to realize that, again, Midland, Odessa, Odessa Midland are the epicenter of the energy business in Texas, and that we would encourage them to redesignate the western leg of, of I-14 in Texas from Brady, Texas, along US-87 through San Angelo, and proceed north, then along 158 to terminate in Midland where one of the eight terminates at I-20, and then traffic can then flow east or west through that.
Part of this, wouldn't it go through either Alpine or Fort Davis?
Not, well, it could, but it would follow through I-20 and ten down to that area.
I know, but to get to that, I think a lot of traffic is gonna go through Fort Davis and Alpine.
Well, we're suggesting to you that the, the best route for this extension, come up through the, the economies of Odessa and Midland. And we see that as a benefit to the highway system. We see that as a benefit to us as well.
I think it could still come here, but I think maybe it needs a little work.
Well, this is just a recommendation, just a letter of support trying to get it through. I think a lot of this is not happening.
When you do, when you support this, you're saying you think this is good, and I'm not so sure that's the way it ought to be.
Okay.
But isn't this two different, two different, two different items and serves two different purposes, right? And I guess I'm stuck on, where do you think that it's gonna come up on Marpa and, and that area, and Alpine, when you're talking about Brady, San Angelo, up to Midland? How do you see it affecting over there? I don't get that.
Because this was a fort-to-fort plan, okay? And now my understanding is they're gonna make it more of a port-to-port.
It, in...
That's why I think we need Tryon.
In, in my understanding of, of what we're looking at as well as what was in the board package, what we're trying to say is, we don't want to be left out. Please consider that Midland, Odessa is a valuable part of the, of the transportation within the state of Texas, i.e. I-27, I-20, and also the I-14. Am I not correct in that? This is just a resolution that folks do not lose consideration of Midland, Odessa in your talks and in your thoughts when you're looking at this.
And they said this is gonna happen after we're over.
I think it's worth that.
Well, all we're doing is basing the resolution, and I, I would, I would make the motion if we do consider a resolution for that designation of the western leg through Midland, Odessa.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Next, number thirteen. Consider downtown infrastructure economic development agreement with Tejoc Shooting Sports. Ms. Gloria.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna pull up a quick presentation for you. Maybe.
Michael.
Michael.
Technical specialist.
It's his birthday tomorrow.
You don't want us to sing, so.
Make a resolution.
Thirty-eight. That you're older than dirt. That's what it is.
Just kidding.
Older.
Sorry.
Randy messed this up, so don't you tell him this.
Okay. This is an infrastructure grant for Tejoc Shooting Sports. We have approved a thirty thousand facade grant for the business, and this again is infrastructure improvements to the retail storefront, not the new development of the indoor shooting range. They're located at four twenty-one East Eighth Street in downtown Odessa. Again, we've approved a thirty thousand facade investment, and they're seeking a hundred and six thousand ninety-one dollar infrastructure investment. Those improvements include ceiling and tile grid due to electrical work that needed to be redone in the facility in order to meet building code requirements, those lining and electrical utilities, water sewer drainage. The parking system, we'll get into here in a little bit. They're gonna have to rework on that parking on the west side. It formerly was a one-way in front of them, and they wanna ensure some safety, so we'll talk about that here shortly. And then also telecommunications to bring you to that total of one oh six ninety-one. The parking lot infrastructure, as you can see from the photos, they are seeking a right-of-way from this city in our talks to be able to provide a safe return-in and restructure that parking to provide seventeen parking spaces, as well as handicap parking, railing and ramp in that parking lot. Again, it was a one-way formerly on, on Eighth Street in front of them, and so the turn-in is pretty dangerous, so they're trying to redo that. This is a contract term for completion within one year. They feel like they will have it completed by April on their thirty-fifth anniversary opening. The design committee approved this with unanimous approval on January twentieth and the tenth, and the ODC board saw it that Thursday on the twelfth with unanimous approval as well. The owner, Kimberly Berry, is here. If you have any questions for her, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, Ms. Berry, I've driven by there, and it's a great building. I wanna congratulate you again, you know, for investing in Odessa, investing in, in your building. I think you're getting your money's worth. How many people could fit in there at the same time? Be able to shoot.
And the shooting range itself, we have seven lanes that can hold two individuals per lane, only one shooting at a time in a lane.
Okay. Well, I mean, either way, I mean, I just, before the conversation went anywhere else, I just wanted to say thank you for, for what you're doing, and I wish you, but nothing but success in your building.
Well, thank you, and thank you guys for investing in us. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your consideration on infrastructure. And the range did open yesterday.
I was about to say, and range is over, right?
Super, yes, I...
Look at, look.
Okay.
The, she was asking if we're gonna close the reto. During part of the remodel, the front portion of the store will be open, anticipating that you guys are gonna be on board. We've already cleared that area out. We are anticipating one to two weeks being closed sometime in February, latter part of February, to facilitate the rest of the project. And then, of course, finally, the last thing we'll be doing is the parking lot, and just a side note, it was Tom Green that was a one-way. And so we have spoke to the city, we talked to Danielle over in P&amp;Z, she talked to right-of-way and traffic for us, and they have agreed that if we reorient the direction of parking, we can get six additional parking spots on that side. So we'll have seventeen on the east side of the building with our handicap, of course, and then we'll have this six on the west side of the building.
That's great. Okay. Questions from Council for Gloria.
I have one for Larry. Larry, just a confirmation from you, the list of the items that they're requesting for and the money, that does meet the resolution that was passed for the infrastructure?
I believe, yeah, specifically with the findings of the ODC, that it does.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move second.
Motion. Barbara, you got the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next, in appointments and boards, I will hopefully have one for the golf advisory committee next time. I'm going to probably put in the University of Texas, the Permian Basin's golf coach, so. ODC, Mr. Hamilton's out. Parks and Advisory Committees, anything?
Yes, they're willing to serve. Nelson Schott and Jeff Kidos.
Okay. Okay.
We need to move them separately, or do one of them?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and approve the parks.
I moved that we approved Parks Recreation.
Okay.
Seven.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public Art Committee will move...
I'd like to go ahead and, with, with the presentation we had today with the Cloth World sign, I think Mr. Ham needs some help in regards to his advisory public group that has been a part of this anyway, and I think it would be fitting to, to elect him as members of the Public Art Committee.
Okay.
I...
Motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Motion in second. Discussion.
Okay. I don't think that's right. We have a, number one, we have a council member that had some questions about that to begin with, and that person is not here, and I think that's very disrespectful to the, at this time.
This has been on the agenda, I know, for at least three meetings, if I'm not mistaken, so I don't think there's anything wrong with the timing on the thing at all.
I, I think it's wrong. I, again, I think that's extremely disrespectful. Also, we only have resumes from a little over half of the group. The other half has not had a chance to turn in their resumes, and this is a council appointment, so I don't see what waiting another week is going to hurt. Randy, will it cause any big problems for you if we wait another week?
Another week or...
Two weeks.
Or, okay.
Thank you very much. In the interim, it will not cause any significant problems. We will have to delay the call for entry for the Cloth World sign. This is a project we have been working on for two years. The only thing that I would say, again, as Mr. Ryan mentioned as well, these are the people that have been working on this public art plan since before there was a committee to appoint. They've been working on it for two and three years, and I would like to make sure that we have council approval of these committee members before we move forward with any other decisions. That way, we're following the public art master plan to the letter.
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Go ahead.
I would like to discuss something in, in, because of the walking forum, right? So there's only, I don't know if mostly y'all know about this or not, but I, I wasn't aware that Malcolm had concerns about, you know, some of the committee.
In, in our, in our council meeting, when it was first presented, he mentioned that he would like to know more about these people and know who they were and, and more information. And so that was one of the reasons I think they asked for the resumes. And so, again, I think it would be extremely disrespectful, and I know how I feel when you guys wanna go ahead and do something when I can't be in a meeting, that, you know, I'm involved in, and I think it's only polite, and we are a, a group, we work together, and just because you may be impatient, doesn't mean...
No, ma'am, I'm not impatient at all. I am, in fact, I think it's something that we have public people that want to serve for our town and our city. I think it's extremely important that they get a voice of support for that, including Mr. Ham, who did not bring enough Cloth World, the work that we have from Mr. Austin Keath. I think that it is, it is proper to not delay people that are on the agenda to be appointed and are volunteering to help. This is one of the biggest things that we have in our city, is the, one of our long-range plans was the art part of our city.
Well, you know, we've waited for almost two years on this, so I, I guess you think two weeks is really gonna be a detriment.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry that you're putting it all on my shoulder, but that's fine, Mrs. Crapp. Do leave me having a, go ahead and tell the ones that we do not have.
Mayor, we have six resumes that council received this morning, and we have three that have not turned in their resumes. The ones who have is Dick Gillum, Jake Legel, Jim Monstman, Chris Stanley, Karen Hempery, and Maureen Perryman. The ones who have not turned in their resume is Yvonne, Connie Cherrybone, and Lonnie Lawrence.
Okay. Have a motion on the floor?
You have a question, please.
Okay. We have called a question. All in favor of going ahead and moving forward, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay. It goes to me. We're gonna go ahead and prove it, so they are on the council. Appointment of officers.
Mayor, are you... Just for the record, is it everybody?
Well, the motion was for everybody, correct? This, yeah, that's everybody.
Thank you.
Appointment of officers. Anything on building board appeals?
No.
Okay. Do we have any citizen comments for...